This meeting of the Personnel and Animal Welfare Committee to order. Myself, Paul Coretts, and my colleague, Kern Price, are both present, so we have a quorum. I'm going to ask that we continue item number one at the request of the Mayor's office, and that we put item number four on consent without objection.
Without objection.
So, item number four will be passed. Item number two.
Item two, Communication from the Mayor relative to the exemption of one Assistant General Manager, Class Code 9381, for the Information Technology Agency for the Civil Service pursuant to Charter Section 1001b.
Honorable Chair and committee, we're here presenting a request for an exemption for I T A.
Names, please. Identify yourselves, please.
My name is Alma Guerrero. I'm part of the Mayor's Office.
Ted Rost, General Manager with the Information Technology Agency.
As I was mentioning earlier, we're here requesting an exemption for I T A, for an A G M, and if you -- this is part of a position that was already authorized in the budget, and it's funded, and it has already been going through the various reviews, and this would be part of the 150 of the exemptions. And if you have further questions regarding the duties, I T A can answer them.
Certainly.
The I T A has recently requested several exemptions. Are you anticipating others in the near future?
I do not anticipate them, no.
Okay. Any other questions, Mr. Price?
No questions, Chairman.
I recommend that we approve the Mayor's recommendation without objection.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Spindler has signed up since this item started, so, Mr. Spindler, would you like to testify on this item?
Can't refuse the time. Which item, sir?
Which item?
So, this is just item number two.
Okay. You just want to talk on item two or general public?
Not talk about this shit.
Okay, go ahead.
So, yes, now we are taking these pigs, these disgusting, greedy, filthy city pigs, and making them exempt so that you can charge the taxpayers for girlfriends and boyfriends for no reason at all. These people aren't going to do shit but serve their master, and their master depends on who makes the motion. Here, we don't know. Could it be Kern Price? No. He's already got two wives. Could it be Mr. Coretts? No, because he doesn't even know how to fuck. So, I must admit, it must be Mitchell Englander, because Jane is not blowing him. So, no on item two. Fuck item two, and of course, fuck you. Thank you so much.
All right, so, now I will ask that we approve the Mayor's recommendation without objection. Item number three.
Item three, Continue for March 15, 2018. City Planning Department reports relative to the exemption of one Principal City Planner, Class Code 7946, from the Civil Service pursuant to Charter Section 1004d4.
Good afternoon, Jason Kline, on behalf of the Department of City Planning. The report before you is to request an exemption under Charter Section 1001d to support the grant-funded Metro Transit Oriented District Program. This position was originally exempted last year under Council File 17-1055. The position authority exempted at that time was Position ID Number 678. What we're looking to do is exempt Position Number 700 so we can move the existing incumbent into that position to better align the position with our budgeted authorities. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
And are you expecting any significant number of exemptions in the near future?
No, sir.
So, this is it for a good period of time, I would hope. Okay. Mr. Price, anything to add? All right, so I'll ask that we approve this City Planning Department recommendation without objection.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, once again, I'm not used to using these. We also have one comment card on item number three, and that is...
Do you want to also speak?
That is Mr. Spindler, correct?
Yes, but I want to speak on four as well, so. All right, so, again, this is another one of exemptions. City planners, prostitutes. Let's take, for example, David Rose. Little bitch Duncan got one of these planner jobs. All she did was blow him, and now you're a city planner, surprise. This is how it works. Yes, what a sad fucking city, that women have to dress like prostitutes to get a job. Then they have to give sexual favors to continue to get the job, and then they have to get exemptions to continue after being used as sexual toys for these filthy, disgusting pigs. Especially, the gay ones are the really worst, because what happens is, you get your exemption, but then you have problems with your butthole because you're getting it plugged constantly by these queer cocksuckers. No on number three, no!
Your time is up, thank you. All right, is there a representative from the Controller's Office to speak to this item? Item number five, I should say.
Go ahead and read that one then. Item five, Control Report relative to modernizing the recruitment and hiring process for city employees.
Ed Moreno, Internal Auditor for the Controller's Office.
Good afternoon, Council members. I'm Georgia Mintera, Chief Deputy Controller.
All right, thank you very much, members of the committee. We're here to talk about a very important topic. I'm going to give you a brief overview of our report entitled, "A Hire Calling: Modernizing Recruitment and Hiring in Los Angeles." The Controller conducted this review to identify leading recruitment and retention practices adopted by the city, and to identify challenges that still exist with the aim to make recommendations to improve the city's ability to attract the best-suited candidates and retain and engage employees. The overall assessment of our report is that, in order for the city to recruit the best, hire the best, and develop a thriving workforce, it needs to expedite the hiring process, perform broader outreach to the communities it serves, and improve engagement of existing and future employees alike. Our report is divided into three sections, the first section of which is entitled, "The Complexity in Selection of Employees." We found a number of factors that may hinder the city's ability to hire the best qualified candidates. For example, the city's interpretation of the city charter is very restrictive, related to filling vacancies by promotion, which has unintentionally limited the recruitment of candidates from outside of the city. What we note in the report is that because city civil service rules interpret the city charter to require departments to consider existing employees before external candidates, the positions are limited. In fiscal year 2016-17, 17 percent of entry-level and specialized jobs were open to everyone. In comparison, 34 percent of open promotional positions, 34 percent of positions were open to both external and city employees. For these types of positions, city employees were given an advantage because of the civil service processes, and they can receive up to an unlimited amount of points for their employment with the city. In addition, we found that part-time and exempt employees cannot easily be brought into civil service, even though they may have valuable institutional knowledge to offer the city. This is why we recommended the city develop a career path into city service for part-time and exempt employees, and reduce the examination advantage given to existing employees for non-managerial service positions. What we're recommending is very similar to what is currently on the books for managerial type of civil service positions, where extra points are capped at one point. Our report also noted that the multi-step lengthy hiring process could discourage external candidates from maintaining interest in city jobs. As of 2017, personnel averaged around 98 days to open an exam after a department requested the position to be open, and another 129 days to produce a list of candidates. We recommended that, in order to remedy this, personnel work toward expediting the examination process by working with job vendors, job experts and vendors, to establish a job bank of questions for the exams. We also recommended that personnel identify which job positions are unique to departments, and encourage those departments to become more involved in their recruitment and selection process, within the parameters of the city's legal requirements, of course. For example, what we recommended is very similar to what B O E is currently doing. They've been trained to provide the city civil service exam at college campuses, and they've been certified to do that, so that kind of expedites a process for them. The second part of the report is entitled, "Branding the City and Attracting the Best-Suited Candidates." The city has not devoted adequate resources for recruiting, which is needed to expand outreach to potential candidates, and ensure that the city's workforce is representative of the communities it serves. Although no recruitment budget has been provided to personnel, it has maintained an active social media presence and advertised jobs on free sites. Despite their actions, women still only represent 35 percent of the city's civilian workforce. But much like the successful targeted local hire program, the city could use other traditional feeder positions to be utilized, such as the county's management fellows to bring in people at the mid-level management experience. We recommend that the city should increase funding for outreach and recruit to increase the hiring of women, and also in underserved populations, with the goal to employ a workforce that's representative of city employees. In addition, we recommend that the city should increase its use of alternative pathways into employment. In this section, we also noted that the city should evaluate whether salaries, job qualifications, and job titles are aligned with comparable industry standards. The city receives thousands of applications for customer service entry-level jobs at D W P. One of the reasons is the relatively high starting salaries, yet professional positions in I T may pay less than their counterparts in the private sector. Job classifications like principal clerk or program analyst may not be readily relatable to external candidates or new graduates, and we recommend that the city do a study of the job titles and also salaries to see if they can come up with something that's more comparable with industry. In the last and final section of a report entitled, "Renewing the Workforce and Engaging Employees," like any other employee, the city routinely has to address turnover, but also has to find ways to renew its workforce as employees retire. To do so, it should consider how to appeal to employee motivations and concerns, making personnel more of a human resources function. Leading research in this section suggests that millennials and new generations of employees value opportunities to make a difference, leadership opportunities, and being part of a group. We noted that the city could start doing this during the onboarding process for newly-hired employees, which would essentially be turning away from the typical orientation type of process, and going to a more robust onboarding process that starts way before the first day the employee starts with the city, and lasting up to a year. The point of this is to make the employee feel like they're part of the city system from the beginning. Of course, this would entail a shift in the way the city views the onboarding process, and a shift in paradigm. We also noted the city should focus on talent management, leadership development, mentoring, and job rotations. Millennials expect information quickly in order to develop into leadership roles and gain knowledge over time, and not gain knowledge over time. They rank training and development higher than financial benefits. This is why we recommended that personnel increase employee opportunities to promote or expand the work experience of employees through job rotations and mentoring, as is done in B O E. Lastly, we'd like to thank personnel. They generally agreed with the issues and recommendations noted in our report, and noted that they would continue to review the civil service provisions for possible improvements. And with that, I'd like to thank you and open up to any questions you may have.
Do you know if any of your recommendations have been partially or completely implemented yet by personnel?
Well, personnel has been working to implement some of the recommendations. Some of the issues that we noted were already in process, but they're also working on finalizing the rest of the recommendations that we made.
So, nothing's been finalized by personnel in any of these categories yet?
Correct, but to an extent, for example, we had recommendations on developing innovative processes for recruitment. They are doing that currently, but there are other recommendations that are still outstanding that they committed to implementing.
Is there anybody here from personnel that would like to speak to this?
Wendy Macy from the Personnel Department. I also would like to thank the Controller's Office for bringing these important issues to everyone's attention, because obviously, we feel like this is the most important thing that the city does, is really sort of growing and developing our workforce, as well as increasing our talent pipeline. I wanted to highlight a few things that we have been working on that we think are directly responsive to the Controller's audit. One is, obviously, the examination process. We've been trying to expedite the examination process and bring lists to departments much more quickly, as well as engage the candidates more frequently. One of the things that you may have heard us talk about is the anytime-anywhere testing model, which is where candidates are actually able to take the test even from home. And we think this is a very exciting innovation, because without having to rely upon physical facilities, we're able to generate the list much more frequently. So, we have plans, we've already done it for eight examinations. 1,600 candidates have already been tested through this process, and we have an additional 22 exams in the pipeline, where another 4,500 candidates, again, will be able to have access to city jobs without even leaving their homes. We believe that this is an important innovation, because not only does it allow us to recruit nationally, even internationally, but it also has a strong equity component. One of the things that we discovered is that many of our candidates, we typically have them all congregate into Fairfax or Hollywood High, but many of our candidates either live in the Valley or in South L.A. So, this really levels the playing field, because it allows someone who may have multiple jobs, childcare issues, et cetera, the ability to be able to, again, have access to our city jobs while home or at a local facility where they have computer access. We also offer a testing site at the Personnel Department. For those who prefer to come in, that's also available to them. But, again, side by side, we all could be taking three different exams just using the testing facility. So, we believe that's going to do a lot in terms of getting people hired more quickly. Another important thing that the Controller's Office mentioned is increasing the pipeline. And you all know about our targeted local hire program. What we've been working on is now developing some bridge classifications. So, the idea is that people could come into the city in a learning role, in a training role, and be able to learn a particular skill that would allow them then to promote into civil service. An example might be in the construction inspection field. So, what we're looking at is developing a different track where people can come in. It might be a little bit different from target local hire, because they probably will have to take a preliminary assessment, maybe some math skills or some reading skills, but then we could actually give them an easier way to matriculate into a full civil service job. So, we have several models that we've been in discussion with the Mayor's Office about. That's another thing. I think another important thing is recruitment. Obviously, they are preaching to the choir by saying, "We really need to increase our funding for recruitment." And we think we've done a really good job with the, really, the no-funds that we've had, but, for example, on the gender equity point, when we've had a targeted outreach specifically for female applicants, we found that we actually got a dramatic increase in the number of applicants. So, we know that these types of targeted recruitment campaigns do work. We just would like the resources to be able to do that. And then, all the other things they mentioned, onboarding, that's something that we're implementing with our cornerstone process. We don't have the traditional, back in the day, they used to have citywide orientation for employees. We generally don't have that. It's generally done on an apartment basis, but we do have a computerized system where we could have some standard content to go to people. And we're also in the process of developing with the Mayor's Office some recommendations for a citywide leadership academy. We believe our city employees, our existing city employees, have many valuable skills and talents, and we want to make sure that they receive the training so that they can be competitive in the promotional exams as well. So, those are just a few things, and we would be more than happy at future committee meetings to come bring back some more details. We even have a short video we prepared on anytime-anywhere, which we'd be happy to share with you.
And I appreciate that. I think probably the biggest gain in the department was in terms of anytime-anywhere testing, which is a really critical innovation. And we've been working together, and I've been trying to help make sure we fund the backlog of exams, and I think we're getting close to being caught up, as I understand it. So, I think we're making some good progress. Mr. Price, anything you'd like to add?
First of all, thanks for the report and for the collaboration between the departments. I think that's a good first step. I was interested in the targeted local hire, and that's a project that the Chair's been very adamant about, as have all of us on the committee, and just trying to see how we can be more effective with that. Any thoughts of either increasing the commitment, or responsibilities, or opportunities along with this targeted local hire? How can we make it more effective bringing in local people for these jobs?
Yeah, and that's one of the things that we recommended, that the Personnel Department definitely go out and perform outreach in the community, so you can get the people that we're servicing into city employment as well. And targeted local hire, we recommended that they expand that type of hiring, and also consider ways to bring in fellows, like they do at the county level, and bringing in people through alternative pathways, not just through targeted local hire, but any other type of program that would help people come into city service.
So, you're saying that there's no single program? Each department kind of runs its own program, you're suggesting, or that it's fragmented? What's happening with that now?
I'm sorry, can you repeat? I didn't understand the...
In terms of fellowships, encouraging, I guess, student workers, interns, et cetera, et cetera, you're suggesting that?
Yes.
There's no real single city policy, just sort of scattered instances that occur?
Yeah, that's exactly what we're saying, that it's department-focused, so a department will hire an intern or bring in somebody through some sort of funding as a fellow, but there isn't a citywide fellows program like there is at the counties. So, at the county, they have the L.A. County Management Fellows, and they really try to focus on recent graduates from universities, and they try to bring them in at the mid-level or mid-management level. So, that's what we're referring to, having an established program where people can tap into that and bring in new talent into the city.
If I may follow up on that, I think you hit a critical issue. The T L H, we've gotten thousands of candidates, and I believe your committee has been instrumental in helping encourage the departments to hire people off of these job classes. And so, we really are continuing to encourage departments to use targeted local hire as much as possible, and so far, the feedback we've gotten is that everyone, you know, is thrilled with the caliber of the candidates, and they are graduating into civil service. What we'd like to expand on, which is what I mentioned a little bit, is this bridge class, which, again, is a little bit different from targeted local hire, because targeted local hire, you really don't have to have any experience whatsoever. You can learn it within six months. There are other city jobs where it might take a little bit longer than six months to learn, or you might need to know a little bit of math or something like that, and so that's where we're trying to create a new program to supplement the targeted local hire program, which would then be able to capture many of the people there. We're also talking about increasing our outreach in the community, because we want to, we really want to demystify the civil service examining process. Many people are intimidated by taking exams, and if we want to go out there, and again, we want to kind of explain to people, okay, this is our new process where you can take exams from home, here's what you need to do, here's what you need to look at, here's how it's an effective way to study, et cetera. And we believe if we conduct that sort of outreach, we'll be able to attract many other people to city jobs that may not have considered it in the past.
In addition, part of that attraction, what are we doing in terms of recruitment? Do you think that there are adequate resources being allocated currently, for example, for robust recruiting programs, particularly when you're trying to find women, or minorities, or particular skills? Do we have adequate funds to really do that recruitment? I guess I'm asking the Controller's Office, first of all, if you found those resources are adequate, and then personnel, what are you doing in that field, in that area?
Yes, Councilman, well, we found that they have no recruitment budget whatsoever. What they're currently doing is completely on free sites, so they're using LinkedIn, social media, in order to advertise, but it isn't a robust, what I would consider a robust recruitment process, where, you know, they'd be holding career fairs out in the community, going out to paid sites to really try to target certain groups of people. So, the funding is limited, and if it was increased, I think they could do a lot more.
Yes, the recruitment funding was reduced in the recession. Obviously, there wasn't a lot of recruiting going on, so there was no need for it. But as the city has been increasing and growing and hiring thousands of people, we haven't had that beef up again. So, since then, of course, social media has also become more commonplace. So, we do try to use whatever free tools we have, and we do have staff who do try to attend every job fair, particularly tailored job fairs to, you know, regarding homelessness, or veterans, or so forth. We really try to reach those as much as possible, but with limited staff, obviously, they can't be everywhere. And we know from our experience with public safety that when you do use some of these things where they do charge you money, you can get good bang for your buck, because then you can tailor the content, whether you're using on, you know, Spotify, Pandora. There are new ways of doing things, and we just haven't had the resources to do it on the civilian side.
In addition, pardon me. In addition, what I'd like to add to Ms. Macy's comments are, is that the best recruiters are those that are city employees already. It is imperative that, we have probably 44,000, 50,000 people that could actively be recruiting as well, using our city facilities, not just having to go down to the Personnel Department, but actually maybe opening up a fire station, a police station, somewhere where people can, in the community, could come in and say, "Hey, I might be interested in being a police officer, or a firefighter, or a sanitation worker, or whatever the case may be." So, those would be also some of those clever or creative kind of things that, in addition to enhancing a recruitment budget, is empowering our city employees to reach out to the community as well.
And I would encourage not just reaching out to the community, but our employees or graduates from colleges and universities all over the country.
And the military.
And military. And again, I don't think we're just doing enough, I don't think we're being as proactive in recruiting at these locations as well, utilizing the background and experience that employees already have, and their knowledge of the system. So, I think those are some ways we could improve, you know. Thank you. Thanks for your comments and for your ongoing efforts to improve the quality of employees here at the city. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and I think we have a couple speakers from the public, Mr. Spindler and Mr. Hunt.
So, we have a lot of good ways to recruit. One of the best ways you could do is to show the city council meetings on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. I think it would make an excellent recruiting situation for the city, and I know Ms. Barnett would agree 100 percent with that, because there's nothing better than watching Mr. Herman, and he, as a city employee, can be hired to watch Mr. Herman give his intelligent comments. Yes, sometimes you'd have an F-bomb or a C-bomb. Yes, we have a C-bomb now, and this is an excellent recruiting process, because the First Amendment applies to Los Angeles City Council meetings. If I say fuck, if I say cunt, if I say shit, it's allowed, and working for the city is a shitty situation, because you don't help promote people. Get these people promotions, you dumb fucking pig!
The rear chief, Hunt, for the record. Thank you guys for putting up... Thank you guys for putting up with everything. When I first started down here in 2004, the goal was to get people jobs and to keep people working, to recruit, and to have people work on Venice Beach and things like that. I eventually started Outlaws from Venice with Matt Dowd and Zuma Dog, and we came down here so that people could work. The recruitment process is great. Thank you guys for not interrupting the speech while he's doing it. Dean Peregerson said in court, he says, "Two minutes is not a lot of time." So let him speak and get that point across or whatever, and just bear with it, things are going to get better. Like I said, thank you guys, recruit from within the communities and things like that. Be safe, do things on a safe level, but take a certain amount of people out of the community and give them jobs and things like that. Thank you, the Red Chief Hunt.
Thank you. So I'm going to suggest that we follow up and ask for reports back from the Personnel Department on each of the areas that were flagged by the city controller. I would suggest that rather than giving you an unfair burden of items to deal with, that we prioritize them. So I'm going to recommend a first priority category with report backs by this November of 2018 on the subject areas, and I'll give this in writing to the clerk of faster exams, building pipelines, and enhanced recruitment. Under enhanced recruitment, I think we should also look at what programs citywide can be implemented, particularly with the mid-level bridge classes, which we're not doing much currently, how we can enhance targeted local hire, and also if we can look at making some of our targeted local hire pool available to businesses outside of city government because we've identified many more qualified applicants than we can probably digest timely with city jobs. But I think it's a great process of hiring people that are difficult to employ normally but are turning out to be among our very best employees and potentially would be that for businesses outside the city. Also, I'd like to ask that as we go through these priorities, if you could also identify budget funding that could be asked for in future budgets or mid-year budgets to actually make some of these things happen? Because if we looked at everything that we needed to be able to fund and we were able to move some of the personnel actions more quickly, I think this slows down the entire city and makes us less efficient, as the Controller has noted. So if it costs us a certain amount of funding that we haven't put in previous budgets, I think it's absolutely worth it to the city so that we can hire in a more expeditious manner and not lose a number of our good candidates along the way because our process hasn't been as up-to-date as it could be. And also, the idea of maximizing the use of our own city employees to help with recruitment at each level. I'd also suggest secondary priority recommendations and that we ask for reports back by January 2019 on a review of current job titles and classifications, on a cap seniority enhanced point system for doing that so that we don't allow for an infinite number of points to make it difficult for those without seniority but who may be a better fit to have a reasonable chance of being employed. And a better onboarding process, as well as the leadership training we have talked about and communications with applicants to make sure they're aware of where we are in the process so they don't drop off in the middle of our recruitment process. And then the last set of priority recommendations were the reports back by March 2019, that we look at the possible departmental name change of Personnel Department to Human Resources, which is probably better recognized in the modern era as recruitment and Personnel being more dealing with existing personnel in a lot of people's minds, and also a look at cafeteria-style benefits, which again are more customizable and might be more accepted by today's potential recruits. So I would suggest all of those as report packs without objection, unless you have anything to add to the report.
Without objection, that's... But just to add, Ms. Chairman, I think my comment is included in what you asked for, and we want to, I'd like to see a proposed recruiting budget. You know, if we had a budget, how would we use that to recruit, locally and out of state? How can we use these dollars in ways? How did we used to use the recruiting dollars? How can we use them again? So that's what I'd like to...
And I think...
That's part of your question, Ms. Chairman, part of your report back, that can be included, I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, and in fact, that's sort of what I'm asking for each of these categories because all of them, I think, have potential weaknesses and lack of funding. Not every single one of them is heavily funding-focused, but recruitment as the example, if we really have no recruitment budget, if we designed an ideal recruitment budget, what dollar figure would we assign to that? Not necessarily saying, you know, if we find we're adding $50 million to the whole budget next year that we would recommend that, but at least I think if we knew what the ideal system looked like, then we could advocate for a move in that direction. But without a real roadmap, I think it's been difficult. We identify an issue here and there and add a little bit to it in the budget process. I think this potentially could make it a much more coherent effort as we try to get to a more modern Personnel and Human Resources process. So I'd like to move that we ask for all those reports back and keep this item in committee as we go through that process. And that is all the items we have. We have a general public comment, and we have two speakers. One is listed as Black Lives Matter. I'm not sure who that is. That person's not coming forward. The second person is listed as Pepita Pig, which I assume is Mr. Spindler, since only one person can be under the same name?
No, it's Pepita Pig.
I'm Pepita Pig, schmuck. Yes, yes.
Okay.
It's my time.
Go ahead.
Yes, so anyway, we'd like to take this opportunity again to increase the budget for recruiting, make all mandatory employees watch the meetings, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, to see this wonderful recruiting period. Because you know that when you work for the city, you work for a pimp called Harmon Jason West, and a fucking pimp, yes, and that's the problem. That's why you're having a problem recruiting, right? Because you know that he took Detective Three Eric Reed Day, Reed, and promised if he falsely arrested Mr. Spindler, he'd get a promotion to lieutenant, and he hasn't. So they fucking lie to you. They make you commit crime when you work for the city. So I say, work for the city of Beverly Hills, not this goddamn city with you criminal assholes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Time is up. Thank you. Mr. Hunt?
Black Lives Matter. Thank you guys again. Here's the thing about this, get an equal amount of all people to work, 10 black people, 10 white people, 10 Hispanics, 10 Chinese, make it equal in the system and things like that, do it fair respectively. And like I said, this meeting right here has been doing a good job for not interrupting public speech and things like that. I totally agree with how you guys are running it. Keep on doing a good job. Please don't interrupt the speaker. One minute is not a lot of time, two minutes is not a lot of time. That comes from the Honorable Dean Peregerson in the Dow versus the City of Los Angeles. So thank you guys again.
Thank you. And there being no more business, I believe, unless I am missing a speaker, I saw no more speakers under public comment, so I believe we are adjourned.